Call meeting door, please stand, pledge of allegiance. Evening, welcome to the September 22nd session of your Brookings City Council. Ask city clerk to record council attendance.
Mayor and council members, when I call your names, since we are all not in the same room, would you please respond with present? Bacon.
Present.
Brink.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Corbett.
Present.
Niemeyer.
Present.
Tilton Byrne.
Present.
Wendell.
Present.
Here we have a quorum. Okay, council, the first item is a consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second any public comment? Seeing none, council comments or questions? Bonnie, please call a roll.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now, under open forums presentations, we'll again, open forum at this time. Any member of the public can speak to the council. Anyone care to topic?
Hello, Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. First off, I have some questions about the COVID thresholds and moving to the next phase four level. When, if and when we do meet those requirements to advance to phase four, what will, when will that take place? So theoretically, if we reach the levels of acceptance this Friday, would it take a whole nother two weeks to have you guys have another council meeting to move to go forward into the phase four? Or would that just happen immediately? Would it automatically kick in?
Sure, the way the thresholds are written, they're more or less a guideline, not specific triggers. However, what council should consider when making the decision to move between phases, they should make sure and verify at least seven to 14, if not longer, days that the current situation at hand has resolved itself. So if we're seeing low numbers, just a week's worth of low numbers, I would recommend not moving until maybe 14 days or longer. And once again, those thresholds are guidelines more than anything. You have to look at the specific metrics. So for example, one of the metrics is the level of testing. If the level of testing is very close to meeting the threshold, then maybe that gives you a little bit more guidance to move to that phase. So you really have to look, not just at the surface, but further detail.
Yeah, and I saw that it says that the testings are a week behind. So theoretically, we could already be past that level and still not know for another week. And I was also curious about why you add the number times 10 to bump it up so the number was like 65 tests and you multiply it by 10, and then you have to obtain your number from that, that number?
Those are best practices determined by outside agencies that are federal professional agencies, sir.
Okay.
So it's a good best management practice to try to meet that, that times 10 number. And so one of them is actually the controlled epidemic, and then one of them is the mitigation of the epidemic. So there's actually two factors there that you need to look at, yeah.
So because I'm like, I'm looking at your chart, and it seems like we're getting, you know, four or five days away from getting that R number under one, which is what you guys desire. So I'm just saying, okay, so if we go, if we have that number under one for 14 days, or if it goes over one, then it automatically sets to zero, no matter, if it's the 14th day, or the 10th day, or the, is that the way it works?
Well, I believe you have to look every seven days, or 14 days running.
Right.
And so other things you have to consider is what's going on within your environment and your area as well. We do obtain a lot of that information from Bonnie Specker and other professionals in the community. For those people watching at home, we do have a weekly YouTube video that our very own marketing person puts on. She accepts many of these questions that you're asking, and she can go in further detail than I as a city manager to answer those questions for you, sir.
And my other comment would be about, to Mr. Wendell, in your opinion, at the last meeting citing why you were voting for the mask mandate, you said that mask wearing is not only pro-science and pro-public health, it's pro-economic recovery. So my point being, if you're going to state that, then I believe someone on this council should make an amendment to rescind the limits on businesses. Let them operate at full capacity. If the master of the answer and the mask are required, then why don't you let the people have their full capability of operating their businesses normally again? Because your statement said this will work, so why do you still limit the businesses? So I would just call on one of you council members to make a motion to amend Resolution 2010 to say that all businesses can now, with the mask mandate being enforced, that businesses will be allowed to operate at full capacity. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody else, public comment? Councilmember Bacon, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to share this with everyone. I received a call from Jill Spindler from Webster, South Dakota, and she took the time to call me at home and thank our community. She is from Webster. She typically shops in Sioux Falls. She went to Sioux Falls, and she didn't feel safe there, so she chose not to shop. She was on her way home and saw the Brookings exit and said, you know, let's give them a try. And she got here, and everyone was wearing masks, and every business she went into, every employee was wearing a mask. She said, I felt so safe, and I can tell you, I am now going to be a permanent shopper in Brookings. I don't need to go anywhere else. So I thought that was just, we don't always get to hear the nice stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's get into the Student Association report. Mr. Johnson's sitting there all antsy and brand-new student association, state and local chair, and real excited. So you want to tell a little bit about yourself and then your report, please.
Okay, so hello, good evening. I am Zebadiah Johnson. I'm the current Government Affairs Chair for this year's Students Association. All right, hello, I am Zebadiah Johnson. This year's Government Affairs Chair for the Students Association at SDSU. I am a junior political science major. It's my third year in Brookings, a place I call home at this point in my life, and I'll get into the report. So first, up to this point in our year, we have passed the following legislation. We have support for development of a transportation option for students who have a temporary or long-term physical disability or injury. We have recognized Vice Provost Mary Kay Helling for her outstanding service to SDSU. We have passed resolutions in support of the BOR face covering protocol on campus, as well as support for the policies you all have enacted in the community of Brookings. And we've also recognized healthcare professionals during the COVID-19 pandemic. As of last week's meeting, we have a full Senate. We have approved four new at-large senators, as well as our communications chair has been filled. And regarding university updates, as of today at 1:30 PM, our COVID dashboard is reporting 33 active cases, 127 individuals in quarantine or isolation housing, 23 of those are in SDSU. Our campus continues to monitor that situation closely and adjusts as needed. Lastly, I'd like to thank all of you for your actions to keep Brookings safe and healthy during this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Wendell has a question for you.
I actually don't have a question. I just have a comment and a statement of thanks to the Students Association. I noticed that you are a key sponsor on the resolution, Mr. Johnson. So for those of you that might not have been following along on last night's meeting, they did pass a resolution in support of the public health measures enacted by the Brookings City Council. I know you had a lively discussion around the measures, but ultimately, it passed with overwhelming support from your body, and I think that's an important statement. I appreciate you having those conversations in your meetings, because I think the more that we can engage with students in a public forum, the better. And so I appreciate you sponsoring the resolution, and certainly was happy to see its passage.
Thank you, Councilman Wendell. I authored that piece, and it was quite the lively debate, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time, everybody's waiting for Jackie Lanning, City Engineers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and audience at home. Tonight, I'd like to give you an update on our 20th Street South interchange project. And first, I'll go over the timeline. We started this project with traffic counts and website release and landowner meetings in March. And then in May and June, we moved to the, we updated the interstate justification report. We call that the IJR. Also working on the environmental assessment, utility meetings, and preliminary design. And then we moved into continuing to work on the EA, more utility exploration being done in July and August, and then preliminary design. So that gives us to the 30% plans and cost estimate that we have here tonight. We had the grant agreement was approved in September 1st. So this is the first phase of the grant agreement, which includes the design of the project. And we really like to give a lot of thanks to DOT for administering the project, because if they hadn't taken over the administration, if the city were receiving the grant agreement here in September, we wouldn't have been able to meet our timelines. We would have had to not start design until now. So that's really a key piece that DOT assisted with. And then in September and October, one of our key tasks is to release the draft EA on our public online meeting. And so we'll have a pre-recorded presentation on our website, and then we'll have the EA document also posted on the website. And then it'll be posted for a 30-day public comment period. And then we'll be finalizing the right-of-way, and then also finishing more plan design. And then in November and December, we want to meet with landowners. And so what we'll do is use part of the draft EA document as exhibits to meet with the landowners and show them the preferred alternative. And then we would get to the 60% plans and cost estimate. And then finally, early next year, moving into finalizing the plans, purchasing right-of-way, purchasing our wetland mitigation, and then our 90% cost estimate. And then we anticipate we would be having the bid letting in September of 2021, and then start construction in 2022, and then finish in 2023. And normally, this is a four-year timeframe, all those tasks, and we're accomplishing those in about a year and a half timeline. And again, that's due to the grant, the grant proposals, or restrictions in the grant. This drawing I wanted to show yourselves and the audience is the current design for 20th Street South will look much like the existing 20th Street South segment, which will be 36 feet wide with curb and gutter. And then we will have either three striped lanes, such as you see here. And east of the interstate, there's been some debate on whether it would be a stripe center turn lane, the entire segment, or if it would be two lanes with striping just at the turning movements and driveways. So that hasn't been determined yet, but I wanted to show you this drawing, that this is typically what the 20th Street South road section would look like. Any questions on that part? Okay, now we'll get into the cost estimate. So the way the grant agreement is written, the tasks are broken down into groups, or they're grouped into different segments. So the key one we're working on right now is design, and then right-of-way, and then there's some DOT costs and utility relocation costs. So in the grant agreement, the amount for those tasks was a little over $1.9 million. And here at the 30% cost estimate, we are about 2.86, or 2.826 million for those same tasks. And so we had some questions on, well, why are we higher on that, on those group of tasks? So the changes that we had here were, our design was about $500,000 higher than in the original grant agreement. And a lot of that is due to just the speed and the number of people it takes and man-hours to accomplish the design of the project. And we also had about $138,000 of cost to the DOT for geotech analysis and design, plan review, and right-of-way appraisal review. And so that was not included in the original grant agreement. And then we also had about $250,000 needed for the utility relocation costs. And part of that is related to the, we're having a boring company locate those utilities, they shoot the elevations, map it all, and then that way, those are all worked out for the design. And so that, that's the difference between the grant application, the 1.9 million, and then 2.8 million that we're at right now. Are there any questions on that one line item? Yes?
I just had, I didn't quite catch, how many hours from the DOT to get this put together?
Oh, excuse me?
How many hours did the DOT put into this? Didn't you quote X number of hours?
Oh, what we have is about $138,000.
With dollars?
Yep, dollars.
Okay.
And then that would be for that geotech analysis. And they did the actual geotech borings themselves, too, with their drill rigs and so forth. So they did the work and the analysis, and then their plan review, and then right-of-way appraisal review.
Okay, thank you.
And so right now, we're working on those construction plans. And so our wetland mitigation that has not been determined yet, we're trying to move towards that preferred alternative. And so in the grant agreement, we had anticipated purchasing wetland credits for about $186,000. That is still on target. It hasn't been finalized yet. The DOT construction administration costs in the grant agreement were 1.6 million, and they haven't offered us what that price would be at this time. So we're assuming we're on target there with the 1.6 million. And then the construction costs related to this 30% estimate, in the grant agreement, or in the grant application, there was, they didn't specify what type of pavement the streets would be constructed out of. And the, so we have some discussion of asphalt versus concrete. And so the DOT will be determining what type of material we should be constructing out of, related to the subgrade material and their compaction tests that they're going through right now. Due to the height of the embankment, they're concerned about consolidation and settlement of that material. And so they will be making a recommendation to the city and the county on whether the roadway should be asphalt or concrete. And so the consultants have given us a cost estimate on both asphalt and concrete. And so they had estimated 1 point, or excuse me, 18.1 million for asphalt, and then 18.5 million for concrete. And then in the end, when we get to a little bit further design and get our geotech analysis done, the DOT will recommend a pavement type, and then there'd be only one of those that would be bid. We won't bid it as an alternate. And so in conclusion, we are on target here with total estimate with asphalt pavement, about 22.8 million, and then total estimate with concrete, it's about 23.1 million, both of those just falling a little bit less than our grant application of 23.3 million. Are there any questions on those figures?
Councilman Wendell.
Thank you, Jackie. I just wanted to clarify, I'm reading this chart correctly. So it looks like the cost savings, regardless of whether or not we go with asphalt or concrete, makes up for the over on the design and utility relocation, so that our total project costs evens out. I'm reading this correctly.
Yes, yes.
Just publicly thank Jackie and her team. They've just done a great job, and I know you've got the county and DOT and federal highway involved, but I know they're putting a lot of long hours into this. And just, you know, Jackie, the Senator Thune's office reached out today, say they're tracking this, and what a great job all of you are doing, and so glad that it's under budget, too. That's even better. So they do pay attention to that, so.
Good.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, and I do have one more slide, just for our next, is there any more questions on the costs? Quickly, on next steps, we will continue with our design and right-of-way layouts. One of our tasks that'll be done here very shortly is posting that draft EA on the website for that 30-day public comment period, and we'll be mailing out postcards and advertising that, so the public can go on and watch that recording. And we'll be meeting with landowners, and then, again, just highlighting the project is meeting the grant schedule at this time, and then our project website for the public, 20thStreetInterchange.com. Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, next, contract exchange orders, there are none, so we'll go to ordinance first readings. Again, we do accept comments on the first reading, but there'll be no vote, but Community Development Director Mike Struck's gonna walk us through this one.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members, and members of the audience. Ordinance 20-021 is amendment to our subdivision ordinance. It's partially some cleanup language to just kind of address how current practices are currently being handled within our office. And then there's also a change in the deadline for submitting preliminary plats. And that's probably the most significant portion of this change, is we've recently changed the final planning process to administrative planning. However, we wanted to move the deadline for submitting preliminary plats, move them up a little bit earlier, so that it allows a little bit more staff time to thoroughly review preliminary plats, as well as providing opportunities for the development review team to review them and provide comments, so that we can get them on the Planning Commission agenda. And so those are the primary changes for this subdivision ordinance amendment, and that stands for any questions you may have.
Any questions, or? Okay, thanks, Mike. And we'll have a public hearing on this and vote on October 13th. Next, public hearings and second readings, and here comes our CFO, Eric Wrangle, all ready to tell us what's going on.
Good evening. Staff is recommending approval of appropriation number five to the 2020 budget, which consists of two different parts. The part number one, the amount, it's due to the Gateway Project. Originally, this project was budgeted in 2020, but the transaction to fund it from the CIP Fund to the, to the actual capital project was not written in the ordinance. So this amendment does not have any incremental impact to the 2020 budget. Any questions on this one? All right, I'll move on to the second part. This one is to allocate $100,000 of the City Council Priority Funding Fund towards the development of a comprehensive parks and recreational master plan. This project was originally budgeted in the 2020 budget, but due to our COVID reductions, it was cut. Now we're asking for a different source of funding to be able to execute the budget. The incremental amount asked would be $30,000 more than we originally budgeted for, and staff recommending approval of this as well. Any questions on this one as well?
Council, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 20-020.
So moved.
Okay, we'll take that motion in a second. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, council comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Ordinance 20-20, or 020 is approved. All right, city manager, looks like you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. The 2021 budget has to be approved by October 1st, according to state law. Tonight, council will hold its final public hearing meeting on the 2021 budget. The proposed process took approximately seven months, and what's hard to believe is in five short months, we'll start all over again. The budget is a living document that provides operational guidance. Monthly, and to an extent, weekly, our operations monitor both revenues and expenditures within the budget. And of course, quarterly, our CFO gives his report of budget comparisons to the council as well as to the public. The 2021 budget is $54 million, which is approximately 2% less than last year. This is a balanced general fund budget of $16.8 million, and sales tax, property tax, transfer account for approximately 80% of the total general fund revenue. As part of general fund budget, staff estimates approximately 2% reduction in sales tax due to COVID-19. This necessitates a $300,000 decrease in the general funds expenditures as covered, as compared to the 2020 budget. So in total, the general fund budget has cut approximately $1.5 million over the last two years within the council's general fund budget. The budget also includes a $9.3 million capital improvement budget that maintains or replaces existing facilities, vehicles, and equipment, which will be discussed here in the next item. In sum, the 2021 budget is a lean, streamlined, balanced, and sustainable budget. Once again, I would like to thank the department heads and staff for their efforts in developing this budget, especially in these difficult times. Staff does recommend approval, and it's available for any questions council might have.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on ordinance 20-018? Seeing none, close public comment. Council comments or questions? Councilmember Bacon?
Yes, could you answer in the section below, non-departmental? There's a line item for retirement payout expense, and as I understand it, we aren't budgeting anything, but wasn't that kind of a surprise for us when that happened? So why wouldn't we be budgeting for it going forward?
Correct. So last year, we started a process where at the end of the year, we carry over any excess operational funds that we haven't used through maybe people retiring, so positions left open. And what we do is we budget a year in advance. So at the end of this year, we'll calculate what that is, and we'll appropriate that in that line item. And so we're always a year in the rear to an extent. And it's a process the council recommended that we start last year, so we're constantly doing that. I believe there are some funds carried over for this year as well, and Eric, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more to that as well. So at the end of the day, it's a great planning process to do.
Okay.
Yes, and in addition, there are no non-retirements right now. We had those conversations, no planned retirements scheduled for 2021 right now.
Any other council questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
All right, the 2021 budget is approved. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. See, Jake took the wrong time to be gone. These were his areas, but.
I get it, close it.
You covered for him?
That's right.
Okay, that's good.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. The Capital Improvement Plan is a 10-year planning document comprised of capital expenses that exceed $25,000. The primary revenue source for the Capital Improvement Fund is the second penny sales tax. Approved expenditures are adopted on an annual basis as part of the budget ordinance. The CIP is balanced through 2024. However, strategic decisions will need to be made prior to 2025 to eliminate manageable, to eliminate manageable deficits and due to increased outside agency funding, funding commitments to existing facilities. Staff does recommend approval and would be available for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the 10-year CIP? Seeing none, council comments or questions? Councilmember Brink.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when we get to the deficit years, moving ahead, I know that there's a lot of unknowns, but what's our most likely method for thinking about how we'll cover those future deficits?
Yeah, what we'll have to do is every year, take a look at what we have for City Council financial policy projects, but also looking at grant opportunities as well. One of the largest ticket items we have in 2024, 25 is a replacement of HVAC units in the Swiftel, things that we've put off to the side and never put money aside for. So we'll have to turn over every stone, shake the cushions of the couch, if you will, try to find whatever funds we can. So every year, the nice thing is we have about five years to determine and find those funds. Every year, operationally, we usually see around $300,000 to $400,000 from our operational savings, and that's due through people retiring, new positions, just not completing all tasks. Then there are also savings found within the Capital Improvement Fund as well, when sales tax do come in better than projected. So our revenues and our expenditures often afford us extra money. So those funds, every year, we'll have to put a little bit aside to offset that expenditure. But at the same time, staff is dedicated to looking at outside funding from grants and other dollars as well.
Combination of being prudent, and also planning, and also looking for the grants.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bacon?
In the blue section where it says facility zero, which facility are we talking about there? It's the third section down, the lighter blue, sorry. It's got vehicles and equipment, and then facility, and then airports.
I do believe that comes from the McKinstry study, so every section has a new facility portion in there. So determining on what happened with the McKinstry study will determine how much money is budgeted for that year, for that specific area. So for example, streets and airport, you see $0 in certain years, but yet, for example, 2022, 23, you see about $25,000. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Council, any other questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye. Okay, the 10-year Capital Improvement Plan is approved. Next one, I'll call the CFO back up for resolution 20-00, oh, 077, sorry.
Hello, this resolution is to update the current consolidated fine and fee schedule to include fines for coronavirus ordinance violations, various parking offenses, protection system fees for fire department and technology equipment usage. If you have any specific questions on this additional fees, I have my entire team here all willing to answer any of these questions.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 20-77.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, council comments or questions? Councilmember Brink?
Just curiosity, I guess, under the city clerk, the new fee is the technology equipment use per hour, what is that intended for?
Councilmembers and Mayor, that is for when we host the chamber forums and we use our IT staff to be here in the building, run the equipment, record the event, set it up for rebroadcast. Currently, we're trying to document that time minute by minute, so we thought it might be better utilized for everybody involved if we set a flat fee per hour.
Seems smart, thank you. And then I had a secondary question about the, the vehicle fees. Seems like within a 72-hour window, they're lower and then they're higher if it's after a 72-hour window. Just wondering if there's some clarity on those reasons for that? And maybe some specifics about, you know, what is the prohibited activity or size of vehicles that's being charged a fee?
So for certain parking violations, you have 72 hours to pay that fine. If you don't have it paid within those 72 hours, the fine increases, and that's an incentive for people to pay the fines on time. And what was the second part of your question? I couldn't hear.
So then they would go, if, if it's not paid within 72 hours, they have to take it to the court appearance and then the higher fee?
Not, not necessarily. There, it's, it's a higher fee. At any point in time, they can decide to take it to court. If, if they want to take it to court, then the court fees are assessed to it as well. As the parking tickets stand on their own, they do not have court fees assigned because nothing goes through the court unless somebody requests a court hearing on it.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mm-hmm. That was it?
Yep.
Any other council comments or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Your resolution 20-77 is approved. And I think we're up to preliminary plats, Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mayor, council members and the audience. Next item is action on a preliminary plat for six industrial lots in the Tellcamp Industrial Park. The owner of the property is looking to further subdivide the property. He's proposing to have all private streets and utilities serving the lots within the area. The preliminary plat meets the requirements of both our zoning and subdivision ordinance when dealing with private streets. As such, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval, as well as the development review team recommends approval. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the preliminary plats? Seeing none, closed public comment. Council comments or questions? Councilman Niemeyer?
Question, Mike, is there gonna be any public parking on the streets? Are they, are they required to park on the lots? I mean, how is this gonna lay out?
It's just like any other typical subdivision, but instead of having public street access, they're just private streets, they're 30 feet wide. So they would be required to have on-street parking for each of the individual, or off-street parking for each of the individual lots to account for their parking. Most of these are gonna be more in lines with smaller businesses, smaller contractors and such that aren't generating a lot of employee or even, to that matter, general public visits. So it's placed to kinda park their vehicles at the end of the evening, store their materials and their equipment.
Because it was saying like Prince Place here, but it would be a private street, so we're not doing any maintenance or snow removal or anything like that on this, on the street that's dotted then on the picture?
Yep, that is correct. Private streets, we do not maintain.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, next, that's the city engineer come up for a discussion on, well, she'll explain it.
Okay, thank you. This item is discussion and possible action to authorize an encroachment easement at 327 Main Avenue. And so our department had received a request to construct an accessible entrance and to reconstruct the canopy over a basement stairway at the Ramp Hub, which is located at 327 Main Avenue. The encroachment areas are located along 4th Street on the drawing here. And the architect, Design Art Group submitted a number of drawings and then also a memo explaining the reasons for the encroachment and then the responses to all of the criteria that was listed in our city resolution 20-017. And then also included a survey drawing and plan drawings and pictures. And staff from engineering and the building department reviewed the application, and we concur that the reconstruction over the canopy over the basement stairway will not increase the encroachment into the public right-of-way. And the other benefit is that it allows the historical window to be exposed, which was approved by the SHPO Office. And then we also concur that constructing the accessible ramp inside the building would create code issues with the floor structure and head clearance. And then we also concur that the sidewalk replacement shown in the hatched area on the drawing here would provide an ADA accessible route for, on the public sidewalk. And the architect is here tonight to answer any questions or describe the project. And staff is recommending approval of those two encroachments into the 4th Street right-of-way.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Council comments or questions? Councilman Brink?
Just one clarification, it seemed like the footprint of the reconstructed canopy is approximately the same. Is it exactly the same or is it a little bit bigger?
I'll have the architect answer that.
Okay.
You'd introduce yourself, please.
Hi, this is Matthew Weiss with Design Art Group. The answer is yes. Yep, it is pretty much exactly the same.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Okay, please call a roll.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Okay, the encroachment easement is approved. We're back to the Community Development Director, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're asking for action to approve resolution 20-071, which is a resolution to create the boundaries of Tax Increment Financing District Number Nine. This would be up in the northeast quadrant of the city in the Svennis Industrial Park. You can see the map on the overhead there. It includes the properties within the blue boundary. All the properties are currently owned by the City of Brookings according to the tax records, except for Lot 1 and 2, which is the Millborn Seeds property. The primary purpose of creating this TIF District Number Nine is to construct 24th Street, which would connect 32nd Avenue over to 34th Avenue. We've been working with the Department of Transportation to convert a utility easement into public right-of-way, and they are working through that process right now through the Transportation Commission. And the city attorney and myself talked with the landowners to the north and their legal counsel, and they have agreed to dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way to the north. And so that would provide us with a total of 70 feet of right-of-way to construct this collector's street. TIF is a means of helping finance public improvements by utilizing the tax increment improvement, or increment from the improvements made on those properties. And this one is one that we would like to get certified through the Department of Revenue prior to November 1st, as there are some projects in the works out there that will help generate some increment. And then we will be working on a project plan that will come back before you in the near future. And then we'll work on the design of this street and proceeding forward with a construction project in the near future as well. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment on development of TIF Number Nine? Seeing unclosed public comment, Councilmember Niemeyer?
Mike, do you expect the 24th Street to go further west to I-29 in the future? If there is any development on the north side of that, our road?
I, I do not expect it to extend to the west, just simply because when you start to look at the lay of the land out in that area, it starts to drop off a little bit. You know, I think anything to the west there would be something that a private developer would have to construct. I just don't see the need at this time to really run 24th all the way to the interstate or even across the interstate.
Councilmember Bacon?
Do you have any projections on what revenue you think this TIF will generate?
I haven't quite gotten to that point yet.
That's okay.
But that will be part of the project plan, that will be coming back before you. First thing is to try and get the district boundaries certified. And then, once those are certified, then we work on the project plan, which does include those projections and, and kinda says what, you know, indicates what we're gonna make the improvements, kinda describe those improvements. What I can tell you is, is the water and sewer are already in this area. They were ran to serve the DOT Highway Maintenance Facility. So there is water and sewer within that blue area where 24th Street would be. But there, you know, we need to construct the street, the storm sewer improvements. There's a potential that we may need to do some storm sewer upgrades in 32nd Avenue as well. And so that's why we're including some of the additional costs there. We'll kinda have to wait till we, you know, get further into the design of the project. But, you know, off the surface, I'd estimate that we'd at least be able to recoup at least two-thirds of the construction costs.
Good, thank you.
Council, okay, no. How about the city manager, let's try that one on?
I, I would just also add that it's behoove upon the city to work with our partners, the Economic Development Coalition, because we'll have three lots there abutting the road and then a lot on Block 10. And the sooner that we can develop those, the more incremental it'll create quicker to help develop and pay for this road as well. So nice job, Mike, I appreciate your work on this.
Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, you said something about 30 feet was given to us, is that correct or donated, I mean?
Correct, the, the Tellcamp family to the north, we've been working with them, and they have agreed to dedicate 30 feet for right-of-way purposes, basically from the very west edge of 32nd Avenue to the center line of 34th Avenue. And so we're working on, on those agreements and that process, the city attorney and myself, with their legal counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward to financing this TIF District Number Nine. Let's talk about TIF District Number 10.
Thank you. District Number 10 is a little bit more complex from the number of various properties that are involved. But essentially, this is for the 15th Street South, 7th Avenue South, public improvements project, as well as the associated drainage improvements. The blue area represents the boundaries of the TIF District. There are quite a few city parcels in there with the Pheasant's Nest Detention Pond, the McClemmons Park. And then the city also owns Parcels 2 and 3. And we are working with some of the adjacent properties to move forward with the drainage improvements and easements that would be necessary. Like the previous item is, we need action to approve the district boundaries to certify them with the Department of Revenue. And we will be coming back with a project plan for this TIF District in the near future. That one, early projections are, is may not fully pay off the total costs of construction. But once again, it's a means to help reimburse the city, and then those funds can be used for other capital projects around the community. And so it's just to help kinda with our second penny. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Council, entertain a motion to approve TIF District.
So moved.
Second.
You guys gotta wait a little longer, all right? No, all right. Any public comment on TIF District Number 10 development? Seeing unclosed public comment, council comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
All right, TIF District Number 10 is approved, and thanks, Mike, for your work on both these, nine and 10, they're great projects, so. Okay, it's time for the city manager to give a COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. The following information is taken from the State Department of Health, professionals from SDSU and the hospital and other clinics within our community. Brookings currently has 118 positive cases. The last time I gave this report, Brookings had 195 cases, so down quite substantially, which is nice to see. There have been one additional death due to COVID, and Brookings making the total two. There have been 696 positive cases and 578 cases that have recovered. Approximately 4,292 tests have occurred. Today, the state is at 25%, while Brookings is at 19% positive. And we use a little bit different number in that we do take out the sentinel testing for more accuracy here in Brookings. We have that capability because of our partners at the hospital and the clinics as well, so we're able to give a more accurate number. There was no new hospitalizations, but across the state, we did set a record high for hospital administration, admissions in one single day. Brookings County still is a substantial community spread. Bonnie, can you move to the next slide? Thank you. On the surface, the 14-day analysis realizes Brookings is doing much better job than the state at controlling the epidemic since the mask mandate. However, the delay in testing could be skewed by the data test, because testing results are about four to seven days out. There is a supply shortage causing this to take a little bit longer than anticipated. Last week, the state did give us a glimpse into the age demographics of who's had COVID, and this was taken September 14th. They are willing to give us just a snapshot in time. You can see that the 20 to 29-year-olds have the greatest impact or numbers of COVID cases in our community. Marketing within the city will be working towards engaging this group to try to curb this, this effort. I was told today that we will get another snapshot in time next week, and so we can present that as well at the next city council meeting. The city is still in Phase 3, which opens many businesses to 50% occupancy or requiring employees to wear masks. The mask mandate for all indoor businesses and public places is still in effect until early November. And tonight, the fee schedule was approved that adjusted fees for COVID did drop the existing fee from $200 down to $50 plus court costs. Right now, the police is focusing on educating and providing warnings wherever possible. The guidelines for moving between phases have all been triggered with the exception of hospitalizations still. Can you move to the next slide, Bonnie? Our marketing team is partnering with others throughout the community, including the Chamber, CVB Hospital, BEDC, public schools, nonprofits, which have all been very busy and they meet every Friday. Can you move one more, Bonnie? Thank you. This week, the program will be, become available granting businesses signage as well as masks to give to customers if they so choose. Masks will also become available to the public at our city-county building, Dakota Nature Park and other places. So be watching out for that public announcement coming out, I believe, as early as tomorrow. Finally, there are a number of private efforts underway to help hear the voices of those impacted by COVID and assist with the mask efforts. And I thank those folks within the community for those efforts. So be more than happy to answer any questions council might have with this report.
Councilmember Brink?
I'd just offer a comment. I'm glad to see that this marketing effort is coming through. I have heard from different businesses who have said, you know, we should have had these things when we passed the mandate. And those that were referred to Chamber, if you're not a Chamber member, you didn't necessarily have access to those resources either, so I think. I think that that's something to be mindful of as we move forward, but this is a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I would comment that all that information is available on our website. So if you're not a Chamber member, and you don't have access to those, we make them available through our website. We do issue it through the Chamber because they are our community partner, and we do fund them. But those people that are seeking information regarding this or any of the other media or marketing information we have, all available on our website, as well as our daily COVID report and our weekly threshold report as well.
Councilmember Collins, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I actually agree with Mr. Walker when he said, since we're all wearing the mask, can we open up to 100%? That's kind of always what I kind of envisioned, if we get to that point where everybody wears a mask, then maybe we could open up all the way. Does anybody, what are your thoughts on doing that?
Bonnie, can you back up two slides? I think the key here the council needs to discuss is that age group between 20 and 29, where you're seeing the largest impact. I think as more and more people wear masks and your numbers go down, it's a conversation the council needs to have, and your thresholds get closer. But these are some of the numbers that you need to make sure and watch, not only these numbers that you're seeing as far as infected, but also the number of cases you're seeing daily as well as those thresholds as well. But at the end of the day, it's up to council in the direction you would like to go.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering what everybody's looking at. I mean, what do we want to get to so we can give them, like the business owners, some kind of hope for the future, just kind of some general idea, I think, is what they're mostly asking for.
I'd willing to entertain that at a future meeting.
Yeah. I would second that, or whatever.
That's probably a good subject to have a study session and discuss, so we have more information and data than we can look at.
The city council is, we will have to look at renewing the existing ordinances in October or November, so that would be an optimal time to have that conversation, whether or not you want to just renew everything. And of course, it all depends on the numbers, or if you want to adjust things, kind of like we did with the mask, to try to curb things. So that would probably be your optimal time, and we'll provide whatever information council might need to make that decision.
Anyone else? Comments?
I'd maybe just make one other comment. I know councilmember again mentioned something at the beginning of the meeting about shopping patterns and someone coming into the community and spending money, and I think, you know, that's great, and it wouldn't be fair, though, to not present the other side of that story. I heard from a resident here today who has mentioned that since our mandate went to effect, his family has taken $8,000 of spending out of our community in favor of other communities and online shopping just because of the actions that we've taken. And so I think we just need to be honest about that part of it, too. So there's a yin and a yang with these things. And so, to Joy's point, I think that that's where we need to think about in a future meeting and see what we could do to continue to keep our spread low, but also help our businesses grow.
Okay. Counselman Wendell?
I maybe would just respond to Councilor Collins' question. I think from the initial passage of any of these ordinances, we have always had the mindset that they are temporary and that we would continue to monitor the thresholds that we've made very public. I continue to gather as much information as we can from our local health system and other experts, guidance from the State Department of Health and the CDC on what we should do with that information. So, in my opinion, those kind of conversations are always on the table, and I think as a council, we should be engaging them. I know I have been engaging them with many of you over months, just to understand where the appetite of the council is, but also as we learn more and we have a better understanding of the data, but also how the virus might move from our community, that we respond accordingly. So, you know, in my thinking, to answer your question, I feel like that conversation is always on the table. We just have to have in mind that, I think back to Paul's earlier point, a short-term blip cannot drive our decisions, or we're going to set ourselves back. And so I think we have to be in it for the long haul, knowing that there'll have to be some sustained movement in the numbers, or we're going to be right back where we started and have made the last couple of weeks not worth the work we've all put in together. And so I'm always open to those conversations. I think we all have been from the beginning. I just don't want us to be too reactionary, knowing what the long-term trend lines have looked like in other communities.
Anyone else? Councilmember Tilton Burn, did you have anything? Don't want to forget you out there.
No further comments at this time.
Okay, looking ahead to the next meeting, scheduled meeting is October 13th. We'll have a couple of presentations or proclamations. Hopefully, we'll have some committee appointments for the council to approve at that time. We'll have a public hearing and action on Ordinance 20-21. Anything else you'd like to see on a future agenda? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Good night.